This time we'll call the meeting to order. Their invocation.
Right. Lord, we thank you for this time together, and I ask that you would put your blessing on this meeting tonight, and that everything would be done right and in order. I ask a special blessing for those that give up their time, their gifts, and their talents to serve and lead our town. Please put your hand on this seat in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There any changes to move the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Can we should ask people to remove public comments so Deb can talk devil-ing?
Sure.
Let's have the spirit hanging here.
No, they don't.
No, I think that was a pastor leaving.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we could move that in this maybe just a while. I don't see any public that's here anyway, no one online.
You just make a motion to amend the agenda.
Well, it's gotta be her.
Yep, it is. No doubt there. She gets to make an entrance.
Well, this is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. Blessings to you, people, to the podium, state your name and address, speak respectfully, and let your comments to three minutes.
But I don't have another one, though. Can you guys share? So we're having a little issue with the plaza, and Marcia and I kind of talked about it this morning. And we just thought we'd come down and let you know what's going on. So and then we were going to talk to you to see if there's anything to do that we could do about it. I think this is where our vandalism is coming from at the plaza. And they've taken up residents in the plaza.
It's foolish.
When you say residents. They're there all day.
Are all day, all night?
Not all night, but but most of the day. I'd say a good fifty to sixty percent of the day. And I've been told that they're taking showers in in the I watched that.
I watched that, yeah.
Yeah. So I bought some padlocks, and I did lock up all of the outlets, so they're not able to charge there anymore unless they do it on that black pole, but I can't lock that pole up. I guess I could probably in the breaker, we could probably turn it off. But I'm open for suggestions.
Deb, I'm gonna go stand in the way. We've had somebody who made you some court trail on the bell.
So if I speak, sorry. I I think we make contact with them and trespass them from the Broadway Plaza.
Well, you can also, we can make contact with them, trespass them, or we can just get them for loitering. Some of those folks in there. I mean, you could you could have come.
Okay, I'll be at the services as well.
Yeah, they don't need to be from those folk. That's unacceptable.
Yeah, exactly.
The two dogs in that picture, one of them have been taken. Some of those, I mean, we had a lot of those folks in municipal courts. That it right now, it's not as bad as it had been, but right now we do have an issue with people writing the eighty-one connection, and they're coming from Salina, and they're coming up here at one point in time. A lot of those folks were told in Salina that we have services to offer up here, more services than what Salina does. It was completely untrue. But then these folks are here now. A lot of them at one point in time were out at the airport park if they were sleeping.
This is the same group?
Yep, shelter house. They were in municipal court for that. Then at one point in time, they were down living by the river. I advise them that wasn't a good idea because they were gonna make a farmer angry, which I do believe has happened. Those folks will go back to Salina because they are not allowed in any of the homeless shelters there. So we had them in municipal court just recently because one of those dogs bit a citizen. So it is a problem for trying to deal with it in municipal court, but they go from one place to the other. But we do need to do something about that, or nobody else is gonna want to go to the plaza.
So I apologize, Deb. I didn't know that they were hanging out like they ever hang out.
Well, it's just been a little more lately. So somebody told me they were squatting in a house on the north end of town, and I guess that got kiboshed, so I guess they moved. But this is all just hearsay, so.
We will definitely deal with it tomorrow.
As a fact, it's got all these.
Well, that's the interest.
And I've got them all. I went and bought padlocks, so those are all padlocked up now.
Do we allow smoking at the plaza?
No, no. And I've told them multiple times, and they just look at me all grouchy, and then Tammy Britt and her husband were there the other night after church service when we were cleaning up, and her husband stayed. He said, I'm not leaving you here with those people.
There's a hookah. There's a smoking device.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So the only thing I have to ask is if you do see him down there, please call us.
Yeah.
Because sometimes we're tied up on other calls. We not I get by there and see this, but definitely call us, and we'll break free someone to get down and deal with it.
I think it just depends on how much electricity they use or they want, because they're either there or a city park, maybe, so.
Is there electricity available publicly at the city park?
I don't believe.
I don't know if there's outlets. Yeah, because when they were out in Airport Park, they were. I think this is gonna be a loitering type of situation or a trespassing, like Broadway Plaza would be more of a trespassing situation than Park would be more of a loitering. I mean, they're they're not plugging this in for we've had some issues with this in some other places around town. This isn't a situation where they're plugging in for an event. They're actually taking electricity for their own personal use, so it's an adaptive services type of situation.
Like in the picture, I don't know if you can tell it from those pictures, but on my phone, if you blow it up, there's a battery pack.
Yeah.
Like wherever they go. I know. I was like, what what is that for? So, yeah, it's, yeah, it's just been crazy and.
So I will say, but not only this group, we are dealing with another group similar to these guys that are trying to find abandoned houses and are doing the same thing. And just like Justin said, they're riding the green bus up here, and they're coming loads now, and it seems like it's picking up more and more. And we're trying to squash it, get them to turn around and send them right back. But once you can stay at shelters
are realizing we don't have anything really here, so they're going back. But the ones that are not allowed at shelters who then are more problematic are staying here.
Because they can ride the bus for a dollar all the way from Salina to here, so, yeah.
I just said, those are my you know, families where I could ask them to leave, or I didn't know.
I would I would honestly think for your for your safety and well-being, it might just be better to call law enforcement.
Absolutely.
Not put yourself in a spot too.
All right.
Thanks, Deb.
But I think my opinion is well, since there has been a complaint, we should notify them. Technically, with trespassing, they need to be notified you're not to be here. And then if they don't leave, it's trespassing. If they come back, it's trespassing. So let's just let them know.
Moving on to the action agenda, the minutes of the July fifteenth and seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four meetings.
Move to approve the minutes of the July fifteenth and July seventeen. Second.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the minutes of July fifteen, July seventeen, two thousand twenty-four meetings. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes, moving on to appropriation ordinance fourteen.
I had one question about what something was. It was a Smith Smith County Memorial Hospital. It was called stepping on.
Yeah, that's just the North Central Kansas Trauma Council.
Right.
We are the like administrator for their their funds, and we have been for at least five years. So basically, we get paid an administrative fee so that they can run checks through us. And anytime they have something to pay for one of their trainings or anything like that, then we issue the checks, and then they give us like fifteen thousand dollars a year to have funds to do that. So there's a fund that's set up just for them for that purpose.
One of their fiduciary agents?
Yes. And it's about two hundred dollars a year that we get to keep the city just for performing those, which is something. They just email me, and then I print it off and make a check.
Out of the ordinary.
They don't have that many a year. Like maybe ten a year.
Come to the city, I feel like.
Yeah. It doesn't require much effort, so it must not have. I don't, I mean, I missed it. I was like, oh.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number fourteen. Second.
Move by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Hatch to approve appropriation ordinance fourteen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes, moving on to ordinance two thousand twenty-four thirty-two twenty-four Uniform Public Defense Code.
So every year, they publicize new standard traffic offenses, and then the uniform oh, the basically, the the ordinances that we follow from municipal courts. So basically, they they republish these books every year. We have to adopt them every year. Pardon me. They make some changes every once in a while. I've noted those changes in case anybody wanted to know. In the standard traffic ordinances, there was a they changed the two hundred and one point one, which is a failure to comply with the traffic citation. There used to be, there was an expiration date on that ordinance for some reason. They took that off, and then they added in a failure to comply with the traffic citation section. And then in the Uniform Public Defense Code, which is our based on our laws that we follow, in the disorderly conduct section, which I wasn't so happy about, they took out a portion of subsection three, which basically says that noisy or loud conduct. They took that term out, but left in the term fighting words of disorderly conduct. Disorderly conduct essentially used to be if you were engaging in noisy or loud conduct or fighting words. So they took out the noisy or loud conduct. We have an ordinance, though. We have a noise ordinance here. So it doesn't necessarily leave us without any teeth if somebody was loud or causing, you know, some ruckus, for lack of a better term. In subsection or in sections nine point nine point one, two, and four, they've added, these are all possession of methamphetamine, or I'm sorry, not methamphetamine, marijuana, drug paraphernalia, or other controlled substances. They've added in a very large section in that ordinance that it just adds rules and guidance for law enforcement on whether or not to take someone into custody. The reason why they're doing that is is that even though marijuana is not legal in the state of Kansas, it's getting more and more lenient, so it actually gives more discretion, I suppose, to law enforcement as to whether they would take someone into custody, notably for possession of marijuana and drug paraphernalia. Usually, when you get a possession of marijuana, you get drug paraphernalia with it as well. These are cases we're now taking in municipal court with prosecuted couple. So those are the changes. So I would ask that you approve ordinance two thousand twenty-four three-two-two-four and then three-two-two-five to update the annual Uniform Public Defense Code and standard traffic ordinance or offenses. Do you have any questions, woman?
Yeah. In section four on thirty-two twenty-five, it just says this city, they have to have an orange flag. Are they all or are we changing color every year? On the utility vehicles.
Oh, okay. Good question.
I think the last time we talked about the last year or something, because they're blue.
They're blue now.
Well, they've always been.
They always, you know what? They've always been blue, and we've always had it as orange in here, yeah. If you want to approve it, with the exception of changing the orange to blue, that's.
Or just I think it's a numbered flag.
Numbered flag. I think it's depending on the year or whatever.
I think that's a good idea.
I'm sorry, what section was that in just now?
Well, it's in section four. It's really clear from bottom of that. Two twenty-four. Section four. And it's
nineteen oh nine. Nineteen one oh nine.
Yeah.
A five.
Oh, okay.
It's number five of that section.
Yeah, Stacy, could you just write it?
Could just take out the color altogether?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't respect the change color, but I mean, we'll. Any other questions?
Move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four thirty-two twenty-four.
As move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four thirty-two twenty-four. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And then the ordinance twenty twenty-four thirty-two twenty-five.
Move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four thirty-two twenty-five.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four thirty-two twenty-five standard traffic ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on, Frank Carlson Library Appointment.
As Lindsay said in her memo, there's one open seat on the library board. She did hear from Amanda Straight, who wanted to serve. I'm a little unclear when that term starts, but regardless, it's an unexpired term that will end April thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
It started May. That's when the term started.
Okay. Okay.
I think Amanda is a great choice. I move to appoint Amanda Straight to the Frank Carlson Library Board for an unexpired term.
Move by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to appoint Amanda Straight to the Frank Carlson Library Board for an unexpired term. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the CCLIP project programming request.
Mission. The city intends to move forward with a concrete replacement of the main line of US eighty-one. As you recall, it was partially funded by KDOT to the CCLIP program, and the city was awarded four hundred thousand dollars for the construction. And we would be responsible for ten percent of the construction costs, as well as a hundred percent of the design and construction inspection costs. That location for that was from the north side of Sixth Street up to the south end of the ViDock, and then from the north end of ViDock to city limits. So yeah, I know where the ViDock is, but so two thousand twenty-six is the program year for the surface preservation to take place. KDOT's fiscal year starts July first and ends June thirtieth. Requesting proposals in August two thousand twenty-five for the preliminary engineering design will allow for proper development of the KDOT project, which requires twelve to twenty-four months. And the total for the PE design is estimated to be at fifty thousand, the amount that was budgeted for the city CIP. I recommend authorizing the government governing body members to sign the project programming request and allow city staff to proceed with requesting proposals for preliminary engineering design in August of two thousand twenty-five.
I have a couple of questions. One is as far as the cost of it, we we really don't know what that is. So based on the amount that we were given, until you have a design and stuff like that, do we feel like this is pretty on with what it's actually gonna cost, or would they just, I mean, would we have to eliminate portions of the project to make it fit within the money that we have?
I'm hoping that we don't have to do that. I had Campbell Johnson look at it, so it kind of gave me an idea. Your side uses whatever it costs.
So they won't be doing engineering design until next year?
Right. That's what I have to come. I have to find the the proposals for that for next year. So since their since their fiscal year starts July first.
So they're in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I have to start it in twenty twenty-five in order to get that.
Yeah, okay.
Going. So.
And the reason for excluding the ViDock is because.
It's not part of the it's the ViDock's separate. It's its own thing. So the
the approaches are all.
The approach is all covered by that.
Is your you submitted this to the state, so they had to take a later budget and say this seems accurate, you know, before awarding, right? Okay.
Like I said, yeah, I mean, we've I've been talking to Jenny Edging at the state. KDOT.
One insignificant type of under your location.
What's that?
Location project. I don't know if it's already been submitted, but it hasn't.
They type these up, and we can't.
We can't change it.
Change them. We get it in PDF that's generally, they don't allow you to delete anything.
Well, you can tell what it's supposed to be, so, you know.
No, actually. I think I did fix it. No, I didn't.
I need to authorize the governing body members to sign the project programming request and allow city staff to proceed with requesting proposals for preliminary engineering design in August twenty-five.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Jackson to authorize the governing body to sign the project programming request and allow the city staff to proceed pressing proposals for preliminary engineering design in August of two thousand twenty-five. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Staff reports.
So a couple of things, the KBI stats that came out, I'm gonna be putting together a memo where you guys will be in next month's or next commission meetings packet. There's a couple of things that I just want to say that without my staff, we couldn't admit these deductions in the crime, especially property crimes. In two thousand twenty-two, we had a hundred and twenty-two property crimes, and in two thousand twenty-three, we were down to sixty-two. So I want to definitely reach out to my staff. I couldn't have done this, or they couldn't have done this without the backing of you guys and good people. So another thing is is thefts, we were down I just lost them, sorry. Thieves were down to, they were pretty much cut in half. Rates, aggravated batteries, everything is down this year. So like I said, I think it's us being out on the street, being visible, and definitely better training too is is helpful, miles for zone. So I just want to thank you guys for all that. So and also I will address the issue with the Broadway Plaza tomorrow.
Thank you.
I wanted to update you guys on the eminent domain. Finally, we had one appraiser who had to be reminded a couple of times, but got their stuff in. So we have, I have one more appraiser who gave me their number, but I asked them to please put it on a letterhead as opposed to just emailing me a number. So waiting for that. I'm hoping I can get that this week. I'm hoping I believe at the deadline to publish things, you'll be the chapter Wednesday, I think. So I'm hoping to get a publication set soon and have the hearing. Really, truly, the hearing is the last thing we kind of need to do. The rest of it's just paperwork and maybe one more hearing. So this one's taking a little bit more time. I've had to kind of coax some people along, but it's that's what happens. So it initially been on the tax sale. It has been removed from the tax sale, so that's not an issue, but they also don't even have a tax sale scheduled at this point in time. So hopefully here, within the next few weeks, we'll have the meeting and I'll get to finish up the paperwork. So we are moving along.
I just wanted to say that final draw has been submitted for the housing grant, so we should be getting the rest of our money. I don't know how much that is. And then that will be almost done. The the board will pay for some things still left, like the grass seating and the sign, I think. And then everything should be done. And then we'll have some sort of an open house. We're hoping maybe Fall Fest weekend and unveil the new orphan train statue. So we'll let you know for sure on that. We'll wait and hear from the families of grandchildren.
Other staff reports?
I'm James Bullard, by the way. I guess we probably haven't seen me. I'm the interim fire chief for the time being. Been some changes with the fire department. Just want to know that there's no interruptions in service. We're gonna take care of business the way we've always taken care of business. Captain Champlin and Maston are stepping up to help with a lot of the administrative functions. We're gonna just continue trucking ahead and get this process worked up. Maybe a few little changes about me is a as our outward appearance. I'm hoping that people will see that as we move forward, that we're out in public more. I want to see that. You know, training, you know, we're gonna train a lot. I mean, a lot of, there's a lot of behind the scenes training to what we do already, and I think, like Brent said before, it's the staff. The staff that we have is amazing. They know. They step up every time. You'll see it. So so I'll make sure there's no worries out there for you guys. So if you have any questions for me.
All right. Mayor Commissioner reports, comments, Marcia?
Well, I want to thank the fire department for the park slide. It looked like a lot of fun. It brought back a memory. I had a concussion on.
That was great hair for me because they were they were going up and going down at the same time. Yeah.
Well, I made the mistake of standing up and fell backwards. But it sure looked like a lot of fun.
There was a lot of fun, yeah, even by the firefighters and the and the officers. I think they had a blast.
Yeah.
I have a couple of things I wanted to ask about. First of all, I believe that I'm not the only one sitting up here who got the memo from a resident in the eastern part of town about the rabbits, concerns about the rabbits. And you know, at first, I I thought, you know, they're cute, and this probably isn't a big deal. However, you know, one of my not real next door neighbors, but I saw him hauling off a woodchuck one day that he caught in a live trap, and I saw that woodchuck with his teeth, and I thought, man, I thought they were harmless, but he had been ravaging this neighbor's garden. So it made me think about the rabbits again. And I know that that's one of the concerns that the people who live there have. I think we need to address this somehow. I mean, they are rabbits are very prolific breeders. I am aware of that. So uh, they are, rabbits are very prolific breeders. I am aware of that. So, um, I don't know what to do, but I think we need to come up with a way to address it. I, I think we've kind of, I know that I've just kind of poo-pooed it. I don't, I think that the time is right for us to do something. I don't know what that is. Somebody suggested catch, spay and release. I don't know if that can be done.
That sounds expensive.
It does, doesn't it?
That, that plan would work with hats.
Maybe.
Right.
Stray cats. So, but anyway, uh, maybe we need a, I don't know. Maybe we could have a meeting about it.
It's been a while since we've had a meeting about dogs.
Will winter help?
Well, they're, you're, no, they're, they're gonna burrow and they're gonna still breed. I mean, they won't have babies until spring, but then, you know, you've got, you know, about nine months when they'll probably.
Someone suggested.
Having babies.
So I've had quite a few people approach me about it because a lot of the people in that neighborhood actually enjoy the rabbits. Um, but I did have someone suggest bringing in coyotes, which I don't think is a good idea.
Foxes over in that part of town.
There are, yeah. But, uh, there's quite a few people who told me that they really do enjoy them. I'm like, well, okay, there's some people that don't, but yeah.
So what we're, what we're currently doing right now is anybody that is complaining about the rabbits, we're offering them a trap. We have a, we bought extra traps. Um, our animal control officer has extra traps and we deliver the trap. If they catch a rabbit, our animal control officer retrieves, goes and retrieves that rabbit and then re-homes it to a different location.
You mean you take it out of town?
Yes.
Not, not over to the west side.
I said they like to, or they don't bring over my park.
Yeah. So, so, so that's.
Set up new breeding colonies.
That's some of the difficulties that we are running into is because it's about half and half. Half the people like it and half of them don't. So that's how we, short-term addressing it is, is we bought extra traps and anybody that would like a trap, trap them and we're doing it that way. I, I, I'm up for any suggestions on how we can take care of these rabbits, cause I, I, I receive phone calls daily. I don't, I don't have a good answer. So.
Know though that there are traps available, so they just need to contact, uh.
They just call dispatch and then they forward it to the animal control officer and she gets their address and delivers that trap. And all our traps are numbered, says city Concordia, and she makes a list of who is trapping and and then when they call, she goes up and retrieves the rabbit.
Have you found many traps?
Yeah, yeah, we've had, well, I almost say many, four or five.
Which is a drop in the bag.
Yeah, that's not, you know. Yeah, I mean, I, I will say that yes, there is abundance up there. There's one yard had forty-five in it the other day.
Holy crap.
But I will say these rabbits are really smart on the traps. Um, we actually reached out to what do we even trap them with carrots, let it, you know? And they're very picky eaters.
Well, they have the choice gardens.
Absolutely. So, so it, it's not, it's not as easy trapping them as people might think, but we're, we're definitely trapping.
I've seen Peter Rabbit, I know.
What'd you say?
I've seen Peter Rabbit. I'm aware.
Four, five.
Yeah, thank you.
But I think the, the, the resident that they reached out. The, the rabbit that they did trap was a cotton tailer, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was a.
One of our tuxedo rabbits.
Yeah. Yeah. So it, it is a, it's a big issue. I just, if any advice you guys can give me, I, I will try.
Trapping is, is cost and labor intensive. Poisoning like compromises the overall health and integrity of the food chain. It's illegal to discharge.
Yeah. I mean, our backs are kind of against the wall.
Yeah, honestly, I, I agree. I mean, it kind of looks like.
Yeah.
I had heard, I had heard and I can't validate the truth of this, but because there are some people that are very protective of the rabbits. That they're threatening people, um.
I, I have been made.
Lawway harm as well as, uh, that if cats are uh, killing the rabbits, which is again, kind of a, a food chain type of a thing, that they're shooting or killing the cats. And if that is happening, you know, we can't discharge firearms. And I would just wanna make this clear, pellet guns and BB guns.
Yeah, anything that shoots.
Firearms.
Anything and object.
Projectile.
Projectile comes out of.
So even a slingshot.
Yes.
Is a firearm.
Yes.
Well, but I'm saying, you know, if people are, if people are killing pet cats because they're killing stray essentially stray rabbits, then that, that's an issue. And if people are threatening lawway harm to people because of these rabbits as well, then I would like to see maybe some more, unfortunately, some more, um, strict ordinance where you need to, like, you can have all the rabbits you want as long as they're in a fence. Or, or a cage.
You would have to be careful because there's gonna be a difference here between somebody's cat and these rabbits that are not domesticated. They are essentially wild. So if someone would kill a cat, they could be cited for cruelty to animals type of thing. One of those rabbits isn't necessarily gonna fall underneath there because by all accounts, those rabbits are wild. So I would caution folks not to be shooting cats.
Probably best not to shoot anything in town.
So we, we are, we're aware of those rumors. We just don't have no one calling in or coming forward saying that, hey, this subject said this. It's all rumor mill right now. Uh, we, we try to chase some of those leaks down, but of course, when we show up, they have a whole different thing. Nope, I didn't hear nothing. Like they're gonna get in trouble. You're not gonna get, just tell us the truth so we can deal with it. It's, it's one of those deals. So one, once again, it's a, it's a vicious circle and I don't know how to deal with these rabbits. I'll, I'll be quite honest.
I, I don't, I don't think it's a, I don't necessarily think it's a you issue. I think that, um, we've looked at it. It's there's not a lot of great solutions anywhere. I forget if it was Australia or somewhere that wanted a set of breeding rabbits for hunting and within their original arrival, like, but then I don't know how many months it was explosive.
Have you reached out to Case State Extension? So maybe they have some ideas for you.
So we talked to Kansas Fishing Game. Um, we have not reached out to Case State Extension and I can do that. Um, everybody that I've talked to is a loss. They're like, we don't have any good advice for you. Everybody that's said that we have talked to said trapping is the best way. The problem is, is as you know, trapping takes, trapping takes forever and some animals just won't go in a trap. They're smart enough to know that, that the trap and and we had one lady that actually videotaped it. It took her four hours to get this rabbit and she was feeding it everything and it finally went in there. But it's just, at, at that rate, it will take years to get rid of.
They're, they're more successful obligation than we are trapping them.
Yes. And we have talked to the two individuals that really support the rabbits that kinda, I don't know, wanna say she started this or, but was involved in protecting him at first and they're like, well, do what you gotta do, but if they're on our property, that's our property. So, so it's, it's been about it.
So then.
Yes, if this is the worst problem we have, it's.
Absolutely. But it's, it's becoming a bigger problem and I just think it's gonna get bigger and bigger.
Well, those people that like them should fence their yard and keep them in. Maybe just have a home. I mean, I know how I'd take care of.
Absolutely.
Well.
So that, that was one of the suggestions, um, we got from.
Shawnee.
Uh, person is, is to hunt these rabbits, skin them and give them to the homeless. Well, I'm not in the butchering business, so have a rabbit cook out.
I did mention something to our local, um, new processor and he said, if that's what people do to him, he will not be pleased.
Yeah.
I'm sure that he's super receptive to that as an option.
Yeah. So, but any suggestions you guys have, we will try. Uh, like I said, we're, we're not advertising and maybe that's what I need to do is put on Facebook, like, hey, if you would like a trap, please call. Um, we haven't really advertised.
That might be a good strategy, at least that it, you know, we're doing something. We are being proactive or we, we are attempting to be proactive about it.
Okay. And most of us have been word of mouth by now.
Yeah.
Right now, but we, we will definitely do that.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that you, you've already been thinking about it and you're trying to do something about it. So, um, yeah. Hey, don't go very far. The other issue, uh, I live over here on West Seventh Street and I'm seeing this truck that's parked across the street from the Presbyterian Church early in the morning and it's, it's a, it looks like it's a truck that is used to train, to, for instruction, to train drivers.
Oh, it's the Ford Hays.
Okay, so it's sitting up there, um.
It's at the, it's at the sign company, I think. Are they rewrapping?
Yeah, he rewrapped that or the CDO.
Geez, how long did it take? Well, yeah, but.
Yeah. And I noticed that tonight that it's been sitting there for a couple of days and I was actually gonna make.
It's been there for over, over two weeks.
Yeah, I'm gonna make contact with, uh, Mark Hedrick and see what the status is. I think he re, or is it a process of wrapping or is done wrapping it?
I, I don't know.
Um, but yes, I can address that.
Well, I, I mean, if they're not ready to do it yet, we have places for trucks to be parked.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. We're also enforcing that citywide. So we.
Okay.
He needs to.
Yeah.
To relocate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that you're already on, on top of that.
So my rabbits did good work.
Yeah.
Just a list of things to get out of town.
Um, I just wanted to comment that last week was, I think, really special for our community with the opening of that big building at the college. And such a pivotal point for our town and, uh, I'm proud of everyone who came together to do that. It's kinda cool to see everything that's happening along that corridor. And with that being said, I change, thank you. Cause we're changing this speed limit.
Yes.
I'm really, I'm trying to tell you thank you, but people really use that as a racetrack and, and you ever tried to cross it? Um, when we were parking across the street, you had to really scoot. So it's nice to have it's like. Yeah, it's been, it's great. So I think, um, that's a good sign that our, our community is growing. Um, I have one more thing. Oh, hood park papers. Thank you so much for everything that you guys do for our community and that was such a cool event. That was awesome.
Yeah.
Yep. I think that is all.
Uh, echoing Marsha and Ash's comments, um, certainly wanna thank, uh, the fire department, police department, sheriff's department, um, having the number of, of professionals out there, um, interacting with the community was just awesome. I think the kids had a, had a great time. The adults had a great time. Say it not too often, but a lot, just think sometimes we take for granted just how fortunate we are, uh, to be in Concordia to work with the people that we work with and to have the staff that we have, that, uh, you know, it's not, I don't know if we can make this work. It's, we'll figure out a way to make it work, whether that's, uh, new construction of a hospital or technical education building or just getting a fire truck to hose down, uh, a water slide. Um, just the opportunities that we have here are pretty, pretty special. So definitely can't thank you all enough for all that you do. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn second.
Move by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Wentz to adjourn. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the paper, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned.
Will you bring that round?
I will. And you will probably want it to.